Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives. So we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Kent County Board of Commission meeting. Today's date is Thursday, December 1st, 2016. The time is 8:30 a.m. We'll begin today with roll call.
Commissioner Schrull.
Present.
Kornike.
Yes.
Chivas.
Here.
Wilkowsky.
Present.
Talon.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Vander Mullen.
Here.
Mast.
Here.
Reeve.
Here.
Coleman.
Voorhees.
Grazan.
Honstein.
Here.
Steck.
Here.
Bolter.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Bonk.
Here.
Chair.
Here. We will now move to Agenda Items 3 and 4 and call on Commissioner Steck for an invocation and to lead us in the pledge.
Good morning. Please join me in this morning's invocation. Our dear heavenly Father, our Lord, and our God, we acknowledge you as the Creator of our cosmos, as the Maker of all things that are good. We acknowledge that you have created us and that you have placed us in this world to be stewards of your garden and have called us to reflect your goodness. And so we pray that in the face of hate and bigotry, we would respond with love. In the face of oppression and intolerance, that we would respond with mercy. In the face of injustice and inequity and unfairness, that we would respond with justice. Today, as we take on the tasks of this meeting, grant us wisdom, insight, understanding, and may our governance be woven by you into your perfect plan of restoration. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Steck. And we will now move to Agenda Item Number 5, which is a special order of business, a 15-minute presentation on K-Connect. And Pam Periot will be providing that. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Pam Periot, and I have with me Anissa Addy, who is process facilitator with K-Connect and leads our early childhood education area, our equity and inclusion area, and our community engagement area. Thank you for having us here this morning to provide an update for you. How many of you feel like you can hit your screen right now? Hopefully, you see a canoe. How many of you may have found yourself at some point in your life in this situation, right? You head out with your spice of life or your buddy into the water and pretty quickly find out you're not rowing in the same direction. And guess what? You don't go anywhere, do you? Well, similarly, when adults aren't rowing in the same direction for children, whether it's at a personal level, whether it's at an organizational level, or at the system level, the same is true. We don't accomplish as much for children as we otherwise might. Helping Kent County stakeholders from business, education, government, and faith community, philanthropic community, and human services grow in the same direction is really what K-Connect is all about. Specifically, K-Connect is a network of public and private organizations working to advance a collective movement aimed at ensuring all children in Kent County have a clear path to economic prosperity through quality education, family, and community support. Established near the end of Commissioner Kornike's leadership term, K-Connect grew out of the Kent County Family and Children's Coordinating Council. With the support and leadership of Matthew Van Setten and Wayman Britt, who recognized the need to build on our public and private systems and put in place a common collective agenda that would hold front and center results and accountability. As Wayman Britt said long before I was hired as the first executive director of K-Connect, "We need to be laser-focused on improving outcomes." I realize that some of you this morning are new to K-Connect, so in the folders in front of you, you'll see a Collective Impact 101 document that I'd encourage you to take some time to look at. So the system alignment work that we are undertaking, our footprint, or what we like to think of as our opportunity container, is Kent County. A population of 636,369 people, 21 townships, nine cities, five villages. I'm sure this is quite familiar to you. Forty-three school districts, and that's 107,060,000 public school students. The network that we've built in three years includes 100 individuals throughout the county helping us with this work, 50 additional individuals that we like to consider subject matter experts, and 60 cross-sector organizations. The work that we do is done through eight workgroups. And the visual in front of you gives you an idea of what those workgroups are. You can see them represented by the green circles, the salmon-colored circle, and then the blue circles. That's where the work really gets done. We like to think of ourselves as the backbone, as a three-member staff that helps to connect all of those different workgroups and ensure that adequate sharing is going on so we too are not isolated in our work. This entire system is upheld by a Board of Trustees. They're represented by the brown background. And then, we just last week launched an Accountability Partners Council. And that council exists to ensure that we are sticking to the mission of K-Connect, that we are staying focused on improving outcomes for children and families. So, why does this matter? In a couple of minutes, I just talked about structure. I talked about vision, kind of the big picture. At the heart of K-Connect is data and measurement. As they say, what gets measured is done. When I was here last, I shared with you at length our data dashboard. And I'd invite you to take a look at that. It has improved in granularity and functionality. And if you visit that, and our website is www.k-kconnect.org. And you can take a look at your own geography. Each of your geographies that you represent, you can actually drill into the dashboard and take a look and see how children and families are doing in your specific areas. One of, I think, the great takeaways from our dashboard that you're looking at right now, it covers 10 different macro-level success measures. So home and family stability, measured by household income, kindergarten readiness, third-grade reading proficiency, seventh-grade science proficiency, eighth-grade math, high school graduation, post-secondary credential, and a career, which is what we're all trying to work toward. If you just step back and take a look at those 10 success measures, something stands out. And what stands out, simple takeaway, is that there's across all of them, a 20% to 40% achievement gap between Caucasian, Black, or African-American, and Latino outcomes. That is really significant. It's significant because in addition to any moral or social concern that this might bring for you, there's an economic imperative embedded in that, right? Because if you're looking at children, kindergarten, and a gap, household income as adults, a gap, that's our future workforce. So we have to care about that. One of the things that we need to be aware of, of course, is that our county population is only going to grow, they project, more diverse. So it's really important that we not only acknowledge this gap, recognize that it exists, but that we begin to unpack the why. And one of the ways that we think that we can do that is to begin understanding the relationship between measurement, strategy, or action, and change or outcome. And Anissa is going to talk with you a little bit about a concept that we are working with.
Morning again. So as Pam mentioned, one of the workgroups that I helped facilitate is the Equity and Inclusion Workgroup. And to really get at the concern that Pam just shared, one of the things that workgroup has been exploring is the possibility of an equity dashboard for Kent County. And the reason being, we would like to have more understanding of the equity challenges facing our county and be able to have that information inform our strategy development. That's really important. And there's a lot of work going on in this area, but an equity dashboard could also help us to connect the work that's being done and create more common metrics to really see how our county is faring. So we want to share with you this morning a prototype data tool that gets a little bit more tangible into this concept. This was developed in partnership with Calvin College's Center for Social Research and was inspired by the Forbes article that you might recall about a year and a half ago came out and was entitled "Where African-Americans Are Doing Best Economically." And in that article, Grand Rapids, the greater Grand Rapids area, was ranked 51st out of 52 metropolitan areas across our nation. And that was the second-to-worst place for African-Americans economically. And that was really significant and caught us by surprise, but we weren't really prepared with our own data or our own metrics to respond or to even compare the analysis that they had done. So what this tool does is it took the exact same metrics that they used, which you see there on your screen, and recreated them so that we could move the data around and see how things could change, given attention. So what you see here is a screenshot of that prototype tool. And you can visit the web address to be able to look at the tool more in depth. It's in your folder. There's a data filtering handout, and the web address is right there at the top, so that you would be able to go and look at this and see how it functions. But just to generally orient you, what you're seeing is a map of the United States, and the different circles represent African-American populations in metropolitan areas. The bigger the circle, the bigger the population, and the color code is the ranking. So the darker the red, the worse the ranking, all the way to the darker the blue, the better. And you can see also highlighted towards the bottom is Grand Rapids. You can choose any of the cities to look at, and whatever one you select to review will show up as a small diamond. We've also zoomed in here to show you the areas where you can manipulate the data in those four metrics. And this is really helpful because it allows you to see how different things might impact change. So what they looked at specifically for Forbes was homeownership, median income, self-employment, and change in population. And this was specific to the African-American community. So here, you could change, say, median income by $5,000 and look at what that would do to Grand Rapids, how that would move them in their ranking. And this is just a prototype. We know that there might be many other things that we'd want to look at, but it gave an example of seeing what kind of strategies might be helpful, where areas of focus might be best leveraged to really create transformational change. And a similar tool could be, the prototype could be leveraged to look at different success measures, like our third-grade reading or different geographies that many of you might And at a recent gathering of our network, we asked people what areas they thought we might need to consider as we're looking at equity across the county. And they were able to explore that data prototype tool and respond to a live poll. There was about 90 cross-sector members represented in the room. And these are the things that they valued as most important to consider. You can see education, income, employment, and housing. And I'm sure many of you know, those are areas that we are thinking about a lot in improving our community outcomes. So this would be an example of the types of things that you could plug into a tool like this and look at how strategies might be developed based on the impact of different metrics shifting. And one of the biggest takeaways that we heard from our network the day that they explored this tool was that focusing on just any one indicator will give you some impact, but where you really see significant change is when you're able to focus on a combination of metrics simultaneously and in a coordinated way. And that really is at the heart of what K-Connect is trying to accomplish.
So we have similar stories to the one Anissa just talked to you about within every one of those workgroups that you're seeing in the visual. You know, in addition to that, having been around three years, we have already been able to present our equity and inclusion work and integration across the country. We have other cities contacting us to consult with this framework. And then, most recently, we've been selected by Strive Together for a fellowship to begin to showcase our data work. So just a couple of national accomplishments as well. So I started out by talking about being out in a water craft and not rowing together and how it's really tough to move forward. This whole work is based on alignment of systems. And the idea, again, is that in collective action, we have to formulate a common vision, that place where we can all agree, despite our differences, that doing something is good for kids, and then row forward together in an aligned fashion because it's the best solution for children. We always ask after our presentations, we have an ask. This is something new since I was with you before. And before we leave today, we would like to invite you to take a look at your folder, open it up if you want to. And we've left you with a couple of tools. You know, we think that collective impact is really based, quite frankly, on personal responsibility, personal leadership, a choice to lead differently sometimes. And so oftentimes, you can't do that without some tools. So we're giving you some tools to take away. One is a data tool for data wonks in the crowd. All data isn't equal. We know that. And so this tool will help you, through some criteria and guidance, sort out the good data from the bad and how you might want to look at measurement and sharing. The second tool is an equity filtering tool, and it's really, really useful for thinking about decisioning, potential investments that you might be making, you know, in this room or outside of this room, and whether those investments and decisions are truly equitable. So it's just something to jog your thinking and decisioning. So thank you so much. I don't know how I did with time, but I hope we have time for a couple of questions.
Thank you, Pam. And we do have a little bit of time for a few questions. Commissioner Mast?
Back on the dashboard stats that you had there.
Yep.
It looked like the majority of them were going down. Am I reading that right?
Yes. Because a lot of those measures are based on the M-step. And so, as you'll recall, we went through a change in high-level measurement at the state. We used to assess using the MEEP. And in the shakeout, the transition from MEEP to M-step, it's not uncommon to see those numbers drop. So it's a difference in the tool being used.
Okay. Yeah, that one.
Yes.
I mean, they're not dropping much, but...
Yeah, that's true. If you go into the tool, you can actually drill in, and you can look at trend line on any one of those high-level success measures. And you can actually see, for example, if you're in Wyoming, you can look at Wyoming School District. You can go drill down to the building level and see how students are performing over time.
So if we go to K-Connect, we can do that?
You can.
Okay.
Yeah. You can look at all of, you can look at your district. You can see how your district is doing compared to the county-wide macro-level numbers. You can drill down to school building.
How the school's doing then?
Yes. You know, this dashboard is beginning to, I think, be used in a lot of different ways across all the different sectors, but this is a helpful tool. And in our workgroups, we have superintendents, educators, principals.
Commissioner Vander Mullen?
Something you said a little earlier. Are we only dealing with the public schools in Kent County?
For the most part, that's the center of our activity right now. Not to say that that would exclude, you know, private schools, but because we're looking at public assessment data, you know, that's kind of where our work has begun. We're three years into this. Around our table, I might add, we do have some representation from private schools, but the focus right now has been on public schools.
So is there perhaps an opportunity, as you go out and do those same assessments with everything from charter schools to whatever, and then make some comparisons as to, perhaps, I don't want to assume anything, but whatever differences there are, why they might be?
Absolutely. That's what we're trying to get at, is what is under, so the end game for us, right, is to figure out what's working and resource that differently, and to figure out what's not working and focus on improvement or, you know, pull resources back from that. And I might add, so when I say 43 districts in Kent County, and we focus on public districts right now, that does include our charter districts. They are public schools funded through public money. And so if you go out to the data dashboard, you actually can do a comparative view of how the charters are doing, how the traditional districts are doing.
So charter schools are included in these numbers?
They are a part of this work.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Talon?
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate the presentation and the work. And what I always think about with data, which is really important, like you said, what we measure, we can move. What I think about is that as a commission, perhaps, we need to think about what would be our role. When I look at our mission statement right here in front of us, it says that we want to improve the quality of life for all our citizens. So within that mission, when we look at these things, what can we affect on here? What can we move the needle on here? And I guess I want to just throw that out there, that I hope we're all taking a look at this and thinking about, as a county commission, as a county with the resources that we have, how can we move the needle on some of these indicators here? Thank you for your work.
Thank you. I might just add, from the very beginning, this is a public and private partnership. And, you know, your mission very well aligns with K-Connect's mission. So we knew you would be an important partner from the very, very beginning, as are all municipalities. So we hope this dialogue will continue.
Commissioner Bolter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Pam, for your presentation. As a parent of an 11-year-old and an eight-year-old, I totally understand that the M-step has been kind of confusing. And it was confusing in our home because we have two fairly good students, and we did see that little dip. So have we heard anything about the state? Are they going to maintain the M-step? Or, I mean, I've heard that they may ditch it and get something different. And then also, since you are kind of the resource to pull everybody together, what are you doing to kind of advocate that we all get on the same page and kind of find, are you happy with the M-step, or should we be advocating for something else?
You know, that's a loaded question in the current political climate, but I appreciate the question. I think the vantage points are all over regarding that topic. I'm not absolutely able to stand before you today and say, I think M-step is here to stay. I do hope that we are able to identify a path forward that most people can get on the same page with. So we partner heavily with Kent ISD, and I think they're a very important player in this conversation throughout this region and Kent County. You know, as I prepared to come up before you this morning, I remembered Commissioner Talon asking me at the last report about kindergarten readiness and the fact that's been a 10-year-old conversation. And to your point, we've been unable to get on the same page, and that really becomes an advocacy issue with the state. So, you know, the state needs to budget for a common assessment for kindergarten readiness.
And I guess my point in asking that is, is it's tough to see these numbers if we continue to change what we're, how we're measuring it. So there's zero consistency between the MEEP, and then if we go to the M-step, so we see these dips in numbers, and then we change it to something else, it kind of almost makes these numbers irrelevant because we're not using the same measurement system. Does that make sense to you?
Completely.
I just wondered. Thank you so much.
Yeah. It's a work in progress, I think.
Commissioner Wilkowsky?
Yeah, a few things after saying thank you, of course, for your hard work on all this. The main questions are, where are you at with weaving in the disability statistics? As Dr. Powell and his work in othering and belonging, disability is in the top tier of issues as how we other people and help people to belong. Second question is relative to, is homeownership worth its weight in anything? As a statistic, at least some people who've taken apart the 2008 crash, some of the blame is laid on the feet of homeownership was the number-one goal, and is that really the best? And also, with the next generation, I've only heard tell, homeownership isn't the be-all and end-all. There's other priorities, and flexibility is one of them. So again, is homeownership going to go down because of just trends and all of that? And then the third, because I was on the school board 15 years ago in this city, we were talking about kindergarten readiness at that time as well. And with, I don't say, so much of this data is, we're going to beat up the schools again. We're only measuring schools. And I know we're looking at the income stuff, but even the leading indicator is free and reduced lunches. So it's what kind of data is being reported at schools. So I don't know if there's efforts to kind of broaden who we beat up, who we give responsibility to, but right now, it's all the schools. And kids show up and leave every day. And between those times, a lot more happens than is measured here. So I don't, I mean, those are, I'll leave it at those three for today.
Yeah. Thank you for your insights. First, on the first question about students with disability, if you go to the dashboard that is fully built out, you are able to actually... that is fully built out, you are able to actually dig in and disaggregate the data based on disability, race and ethnicity, gender, socioeconomic status. You can create all of those breaks. I can tell you, in our prenatal-to-third-grade work group that Anissa leads, we do have a very active disability conversation. We have people who are very close to that issue, ensuring that what comes out of that work group is inclusive of our students with disabilities. Is that...
Yep.
Okay. Second question?
The worship of homeownership.
Oh, yeah, the worship of homeownership.
I mean, excuse me, that might be...
I think, I actually think that that conversation is ongoing. So I might add for you, K-Connect, the three members of our backbone staff located out on the Belt Line, we do not dream up all of this infrastructure. This infrastructure is really dreamt up and life is put into it by the network, the 150-some people and 60 different organizations. So I think you raise a fair point, and I believe that point is also being discussed with our partner, the ENTF Essential Needs Task Force, which is very, very close to the home and family stability effort. And so we'll look to them for some additional guidance. I think wealth building is a topic that has mixed in with the homeownership that I know some are looking at. And then the third was beating people up. Is that what institutions do? Who's getting beaten up? You know, I love the question because from day one, so my background is actually in education, and from day one, when I looked at our dashboard and the success measures that had been identified, I mean, I think you, you need to check the pulse with something, right? And the data coming out of education, at that time, three years ago, there was a consistent trend line, but it isn't everything. And one of the conversations that we've had and done some modeling with is the superintendent of Wyoming Public Schools, Tom Reader. And we've gone to him and said, this information that we're presenting is not intended to put all of the marbles in the school building, because we know the school can't do it by itself. The whole idea here is collective impact, that this takes a community, it takes government, it takes nonprofits, and we have to identify what it is we're going to move. Part of that is understanding the measurement and a future vision for our kids. And so he's been, really, he rolled up his sleeves and came to work with us, and what we're, we're doing is some data modeling to say, where are the children within this district that aren't doing well? And the idea was, we think that they're probably actually located in some pockets. We modeled two years worth of data. We found out that was the case. So what we'd like to do is then go to some of the other partners, United Way for one, that runs a collective of 60-some different organizations, and say, where are, are you working in these communities? How are you delivering support to parents for early education, for example, or home visiting? And I think that's one way to take it out of the school and, and get the support that's needed for the district to do better.
You did well with Commissioner Bolkowski's compound question.
Thank you.
So any other questions? Well, we thank you, Pam, for your present, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll get it right.
Oh, okay. We thank you for your presentation, you know, and having seen K-Connect in concept and then come to the level where it's at now is, is really an exciting thing. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you so much for having us.
We move then to item, agenda number six, which is public comment. If there's anybody that has public comment today, please come forward, state your name and address, and we have three minutes to address the board. I have not seen anybody, so we will move to agenda item number seven, which is our consent agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair. I move approval of the consent agenda.
Support.
Support by Vice Chair Schroll. Any questions or comments? I see none. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schroll.
Yes.
Corn dyke.
Yes.
Chivas.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Vandermolen.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes, motion passes. I thought our congressman was present in our press conference. All right, we will move to agenda item number eight, which are resolutions. And for the first one, I will call on Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 109, the 2017 current unmet needs funding for the Department of Health and Human Services.
With support by Commissioner Corndyke. Questions or comments on this motion? I see none. It is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schroll.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Chivas.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Vandermolen.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes, motion passes. So we move then to agenda item number nine, which is a second public comment period. This is a one-minute period. If there's anybody that would like to speak, please come forward. I do not see anybody, so we will move to agenda item 10, which are our reports. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would like to announce the hiring of a new CEO out of the airport, Jim Gill. I think you've had the ability or the opportunity to read some of the press releases that are out there, but he comes from Pittsburgh, and I think he's going to be a great fit for our authority as we move forward. And second note, the fundraising's going along fine. I think we're, we're at 17 million. I hope to get Kirk Pullen in here to just give a brief overview of how that's going. And so we're in the closing phases of that $20 million fundraising project, and the construction out at the airport is on time. I don't know if it's under budget, but it's close, I imagine. And we are hoping to open part of that terminal up in May of 2017 for, to move the checkpoint from the B-Concourse so we can complete that renovation in May. So we're, we're moving on.
Exciting times at the airport, and thank you for your leadership as Chair of Airport Authority. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair. Salt Belt. I wasn't at the meeting last week, I mean, two weeks ago. Meetings do change. It conflicted with the land bank, so I attended that meeting and went a little longer than I thought. Just wanted to update people that the 2017 land bank budget was approved. It is online for viewing. So if you have any questions of that, you can contact the Executive Director, Dave Allen. I'm sure he'd go over anything that you have questions about. The size of the budget has been reduced. We've asked, actually reduced staff also, so we're trying to run it as lean as possible. One thing that came out of the meeting that I was kind of proud of is that, you know, we're often compared with other land banks, Detroit versus Grand Rapids. Just wanted to just update that we've been contracted to send one of our staff members to the Detroit Land Bank, because they see the way we do it, and there is a drastic difference between how they operate and how we operate. And this person's going to be consulting in the ham-tramic area and to see if we can bring some of our ideas into the Detroit Land Bank. So just appreciate the staff that we've got at the land bank and their efforts to not just help our area, but other areas in the state.
Thank you. Any other reports? I see none, so we'll move to the next agenda item, which is miscellaneous. Any commissioner miscellaneous today? Fisher Corndyke.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to congratulate Catholic Central and West Catholic Football Teams for both winning state championships this past weekend at Ford Field. Great job to accomplish that feat. And also, I'll hold my philosophical discussions with my colleague after the meeting. Thank you.
Commissioner Mast.
I just wanted to mention, sometime back, I talked about Network 180 moving their administrative offices from their Fuller Avenue. That's going to be occurring, it was supposed to occur today, but I think they postponed it again. So within the next week or two, we will have new administrative offices. So that opens up the current office for more appropriate mental health services. And there's a couple of different things in order from there.
Okay. Anyone else? I see none. I do have a few items. The first is membership to that Friend of the Court Community Engagement Task Force that we're putting together. I will go down the list of those people that will be a member on this. Commissioner Bolkowski, Corndyke, and Voorhees. I've also asked Commissioner Chivas to be on it and remain on as a citizen appointment after January 1st. Sunita Lanier from the City Commission, Clee Jackson, Reverend Dan Oglesby, Reverend Jerry Bishop, Reverend Jerome Glenn, Bishop Walter Durham, Tony Jaliffi, Wayman Britt, Judge Daniel Zemitis, Deb McNabb, who has just been elected and will take office as a judge on the first, and Enid Gladus. Now, these, again, just to review, the charge is to provide a form of community engagement and dialogue about the child support enforcement practices, research best practices for community engagement and child support enforcement, and addressing outstanding bench warrants. And three, provide recommendations to the Circuit Court on a community engagement and bench warrant enforcement program by March 31st, 2017. So it will be a fairly short run, hopefully a task force. I will name the Chair of this at a later time. Any questions on that? This comes out of, if you recall, discussions that started earlier this year, and then we had one meeting where we had a number of people here that provided a public comment on this form.
Well, we can get something in writing about that. I mean, because I was trying to write down, as you said...
Oh, we can certainly get this out.
Make sure we all get it. Thank you.
Okay. Next announcement is that we did hold the Republican Caucus earlier this week, and I think we had almost all Republicans there. Interestingly, I think we had almost all of the Democrats, or at least a majority of the Democrats, at that meeting as well. We went through our, a lot of our committee assignments for next year. And again, these are not final determinations. These are recommendations. We vote on them on the first meeting of our board in January. And I was honored to be selected again to be Chair, and Commissioner Bolter was selected to be our new Vice Chair. So we'll, again, deal with those in a formal way at our first meeting of the year. Which brings me to my next item, which is the first meeting of the, of our commission. I'd like to poll the commissioners, we have an option of either doing it on the third, which is the first Tuesday, or the fifth, which is the first Thursday. There was some concern that maybe the third was too close to the holidays that might create issues for people. So if I could just poll the commissioners by hand vote, who would prefer the third? I see one, two, three, four, five, six. And then who would prefer the fifth? One, two, three, four. So, pretty close, so I'll, I'll consult with Daryl.
Are we just reliable? Just checking, do we rely on each other?
I think we can on this one.
I'm just checking.
And then also, I announced at that caucus meeting, and I'll announce here, as you recall, when we authorized the zoo-museum millage item to go on the ballot last, earlier this year, question was about county representation on the Grand Rapids Public Museum Board. And at that time, Dale Robertson, the Executive Director, said that he was happy to add a seat with the county commission appointee. So we now have a new position to fill. This will be a Chair appointment. I had mentioned, if anyone is interested in that, to, to get me your, a note by the end of this week, if possible, and then I'll add that to the list of those Chair appointees that, that we will do for next year. So just, again, if you're interested, I have heard from two commissioners. If there's anyone else that's interested, let me know. And that is the extent of my announcements. So we will move then to agenda item number 12, which is adjournment, and I will call on Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adjourn to December 15, 2016. Something to the call of the Chair.
We have support. All in favor, indicate with a say "aye." Any opposed? We are adjourned.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.